Oh, you did tonight?
Yeah.
I didn't think I'd have time. And what?
I finished about fifteen minutes ago. Over here.
Oh, that's awesome. Okay.
Good group.
Oh, yeah, no, it's a great group, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I would have loved to have gone, but I just figured.
Take you into the group chat.
Yeah. It's like a men's dinner group. We don't really go to, it sounds worse than it is. Like we went to the Garden Street Bowl tonight.
Probably contact.
So, it's fun.
Okay, she said that she don't.
And I mean, the floor, the floor was staff, I think, without, but it doesn't matter, because most of the action comes from the staff. Right? So the people are just.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I don't think it would work.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right. And they showed some different configurations, so.
Well, I was in North and South Carolina.
But then what they're gonna do is do some traffic turns. So go back in the summertime, you know. And return for move on, and uh, how many people come from, from full, full turn and to get those numbers and. You know, but to me, the biggest issue is really the site difference, especially since we put a strip of glass hill and say from across the top, one inch wide, just stick it there to keep your glasses from falling off.
Isn't that a word on top of your head?
Be nice if they did.
And now that. I have returned the recorder on. This is all recorded now. Is this the crew right here? Um, well, we don't have Michelle, and we don't have Simone. Uh, Simone's recovering from an illness, Michelle probably had some scheduling issues that couldn't make it, so. And if that's gonna continue, Sean, we'll just, uh, I'll have to re-coordinate this, so I do have it out soon, and I can publicize it to everybody. But what I do is I record it on Zoom, and then I send it to YouTube, the uploading. So it, it, it just loads it onto the, my small laptop, and then I just move it up to the cloud. Robert, we're worried by. Okay. That's fine. Yep, that's great.
The mic's on, please.
All right, seven o'clock. On a Rundle budget board and selectmen's meeting, we'll can call to order. Okay. First item up, does approval of the agenda?
Yeah, so move.
Need a second to that.
Oh.
Yeah.
You got a second?
Yes.
All right, so we have to rule the agenda. Move right on into first item for Fire Rescue Service thirteen oh one, thirteen oh three, and thirteen oh four. Yeah, uh, what I did, uh, Sean, is I really put them all together, because they're all sort of interlinked now. Basically, on the presentations you have here, they're. They're pretty much with the adjustments that, uh, that I had proposed for salary adjustments, as well as some of the action that you had taken. Uh, I think a few months ago, when, when the chief had come to you about some adjustments in hourly rates, so I built those into those last year's budget numbers, so. They, they become a little more accurate in terms of comparison. Um, but the big, uh, I think the big issue, um, throughout this whole budget, uh, there may be some smaller detail items that will come up, but. The larger issue, I think, is, is, um, hopefully you all have the opportunity to read, at least peruse the, uh, staffing needs assessment that the, that the chief put together. And I'm sure he has some reasons why he did that, and some real-life scenarios that he's dealt with over the past several months as a, as a result of, um, staffing issues, and I think you. Probably would like to share that, and then be here to, to ask any questions you may have, uh, based on, um, his recommendation to, uh, to add some staffing to the fire department. Chief, I'll leave it to you.
Yeah. Um, one thing on that, from that spreadsheet, um, under the fire chief, you see medical director. Uh, we're, we're mandated by the state to hire a medical director. So it's a, essentially, it's a doctor on retainer. Um, he overlooks all our, our EMS practices, um, he goes over any medication or drug, um. Anybody who's been administering drugs and stuff like that, just making sure they were on track with everything. Um, I guess the state, I don't know what the issue was, but they made it, mandated all EMS services that have a direct medical director involved in services, so we didn't really have a choice.
Is that brand new?
That's brand new, yeah. Uh, as of January first, we had to have this person in place. So, um, the cost for the medical director, his rate was seventy-five hundred dollars a year. So.
Shouldn't that be an additional line item?
Great point, and yes, I think, uh, I think, uh, I'll talk with, um, I'll talk with Lisa, and we'll put it in as a separate, uh, line item.
It looks like, it looks like your salary, you know, it just begs a question.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll separate that out and make it, uh, its own standalone. So.
Second question I have is, uh. Does that, Doctor, you didn't have a special training or background that's specific to?
Um, he is actually a certified Maine State paramedic. He was a paramedic before became a medical doctor.
Okay, has to be a paramedic, though.
Yeah, uh, well, not necessarily, there are some medical doctors, but the, the preference was to have someone in the field who actually. Who's been in the field, knows what we do, versus, uh, getting a chiropractor if you're a medical director, well, that doesn't work.
So you have another person, why?
Yeah, no, he's already been through all the paperwork, he's actually employee of the town. He was in my office this afternoon, we're putting together some trainings for the summer, uh, we're gonna get involved more with the, with the guys, um, so, because. All of our members, everybody who is EMS certified, uh, EMT basic, and advanced EMT, or paramedic. Um, require CEHs, continuing education credits or hours, and, uh, so we need the training.
Right.
And we need to upkeep our license. Problem is, is in the past couple of years, COVID really didn't help. It, it's been a, a huge reduction on the classes that we can take. So, uh, we need practical classes, well, a lot of stuff with COVID, they weren't allowing any practice. So now, uh, we had this doctor on board, and we're gonna take advantage of him, because he can put together all these trainings for us, and make sure that we're able to get our CEHs, so we certify our guys.
Does this guy have a name?
Yeah, Dr. Brown.
Brown?
Robert Brown.
It's always nice to put a name to.
Yeah.
Well, either that or we keep referring to it as this guy.
Yeah, right. So that's one, the, that's pretty much the only big change on that.
A suggestion. My eyes are getting old. Part time. Think if you were to.
A little bigger font?
Well, either that or just, uh, fifth page function in Excel.
Yeah, that one is small.
Would just do that. So.
Is this better? The better size?
I think it's the same, like. Same, same, same thing, same size. Um, the other suggestion I would make is, is that. We need a couple of the long ago years, and add two columns, one would be differential dollars that you're proposing from twenty-two, twenty-three, and the percentage difference in network percentage. I, I take that one.
Like the.
And they don't lie.
That's right.
So you're way ahead of the job. Yeah, uh, that, that makes it easier, really, to go through a lot of detail and focus on, on the items quickly, that's really the heavy hitters. And if you run out of room, maybe you're not able to go like thousand and fifteen. Take two thousand and fifteen out, or maybe, or maybe even sixteen, and then just add those.
Yeah, you don't need all those back years to really change. Yeah.
In all honesty, to be able to pull back two years, I think it's. Three years, you figure?
I think. Yeah. So.
Three, four, yeah. Okay.
You know, what would make it readable, too, is, uh, put the commas in for the thousands position.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, just, uh, kind of give it to the, the meat of things, uh, dues of subscriptions. Yeah, last year was budgeted for sixty-five hundred, and now we're. Being proposed.
Yes.
Ten thousand, eight hundred and ten.
Yep, um, we signed on, and while we're on that dollar, I'm just gonna show you what we've done with that. So, uh, we signed, we had to sign on with a new software company called First Do. Because our, our previous software company, Data Track, uh, was, uh, timing out, it's just, uh, an old software, and they decided that no longer wanted to carry it. So we had to find something else. Now, First Do, uh, or Data Track, used to provide us, uh, our payroll, um, we, it was a, a training platform, you could put all the trained documents in there. Um, and also provided us with our incident reporting, and, um, what else? Uh, inventory, gear inventory, that kind of stuff, every time we, 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 uh, inspected our gear equipment, stuff like that. Um, and also does our purchase orders, so, which are huge. So losing that software, I'm trying to find something comparable. First Do came along, uh, they provided, uh, pretty much everything except purchase orders. So I had to go back, I went back to Chad and said, hey, anyway, I can just steal your software and just have, and just steal, but borrow your software and just have the purchase order piece of it? And he was like, I'm getting rid of the company, I'm just doing away with it, I'm just, so if you want to keep that piece, go ahead. So I was just like, that was perfect for us. So we kept that piece, but the incident reporting and stuff like that came with First Do. Uh, it was a huge, uh, it was a huge thing for us. Um, they do all our mapping as well, so they actually went in and pre-planned every single structure in the town of Rundle. So I can click on all of your houses, and I can see a picture of it, I can see the layout of the house, um, I can see when it was built, there's a square footage. Um, and I can look at the map and find the nearest hydrant, and I can pull up a tape measure and measure how far the hydrant is from your house, and I can know that in a split second. So I know that if I have a thousand feet of hose on my truck, I know that I can get there with a thousand feet, or I can't, I can't, and it's another truck. So it's great, it was great stuff. So, uh, again, they offered the payroll piece, uh, so we're doing payroll with it, uh, we're doing all our scheduling with it, which Data Track can also. So all our per diem, and, uh, soon, all of our full-time, and my schedule as well is gonna be on there as well. Um, we do all our, uh, we have life safety inspections, we're doing now, so going to businesses, doing safety inspections, and that's all coming out of there. With the safety inspections, if we find any huge violations or anything that could be hazardous for us going into this building, we can mark it on the map. And when we mark it on the map in the inspection, it falls back onto that pre-plan, that diagram, that house, that all that information that pulls up, we have called, that information gets transferred. So we have a lot of information responding to a call. Um, so it also keeps inventory of all of our equipment, and all the trucks, all the truck vehicle maintenance. It creates a work order for us, so we can create, uh, history on all the maintenance that's being done on all our equipment, and all the, the trucks and vehicles that we have. So down the history, I can pull the history five years from now, and say, in the past five years, we've spent this much money on this vehicle. So there's that piece, another piece is Community Connect. I was trying to find a way to involve the community to get the risk reduction, get everybody involved with us to try to make our job easier. Um, First Do came out with this program, and we just got online with it about a month ago. Um, I just got the card this week, and I thought that was perfect for the meeting. So I'll let you guys have one, you can pass them around if you want. So what Community Connect does is you can either go on the link from the card, or if you guys are tech savvy, you might surprise us. Well, do the.
I didn't read your text or back.
So, um, there's a scan code in the back. I think that's what they call it. So you can pull up your phone, open your camera up, and go to the Q code, and it'll open up a website where you'll have its, its residence or businesses. You can scroll down, it gives you a bunch of information, there's a couple of things that I put in there, and there's also a video on what they do. You can watch the video, it's about two minutes long. Um. Really connect, anything, it, basically what you're doing is, they ask you to, to sign up, open an account, and there's no charge, there's no fee for that. And what you do is, when you open the account, it's gonna ask you for your address. When you put your address in, it ties into our system, based on the information we get, when we pull, we get a call, nine-one-one call. So now, if you put, and you can put any information you want, you don't have to do it all, you don't have to do whatever you want to give. Um, and, you know, what it's designed for is if you have, uh, anybody has a parent, like Meme or Pepe, in the back, the spare bedroom, whose bedroom it is, can't get out, and who's alone during the day, because both the husband and wife work. We get a call, that's in there, that pops up on our screen, we see it, we know there's someone in the house, potentially both cars gone, I think everybody's gone, but there could be someone home. Uh, dogs, some of the dogs are counted, we know that, you know, they're, they're at work, but the dogs are counted, you know, to do everything we can to get to, to the animals, that's part of family, now, everybody's got dogs. Uh, cats, the same way, um, they can put their cat's name, the dog's name on there. Um, cats don't answer. And I know, I know, but at least we know they're there. We can put, uh, like, uh, any allergies, medications that people have, uh, some people have, uh, one, one family had an autistic child, and they didn't want sirens and lights and everything, one up to the house when he's having a seizure or something. Um, so, you know, it's just something that they asked, that pops up on the screen. That, or if there's a fire, you might not know what to do, the smoke alarm's going off, you might hide, so you might have to look for him even harder, because he's scared.
I could just put in for a second, how's the security on this system?
They use.
A lot of information on.
The same security, and it says that on the, uh, the video, uh, they use the same security that banks use, as far as everything goes, so it's, it's pretty, pretty high-security. Uh, I, I really, I, I don't know a thing about what, you know, computer security is, uh, but they do, they do say that, you know, they, they strive on that. Uh, so take a look at it, um, and if we have a chance.
It's already up, isn't it?
It's up, it's ready to go.
I view stuff, I'm logging in.
You have?
It's, it's very, it's very simple, and when you have someone in the house who has, it asks if you have someone who has allergies, that you have someone who has a mobility issue.
Yeah.
You just, you just answer the questions, and then when you're all done, you just enter, and it's fine, and you get a message saying they have your information.
Yep.
So.
Um, so it's, it's a great value for us, uh, helps us know what's going on, uh, when we're pulling up to the house, and say, you know, whatever. Uh, businesses are great, too, if they have hazmat products in the back, you know, the back closet or whatever, it'd be nice to know when places on fire. But it's all good info, so.
I forgot to tell you what was in the garage.
Chief, I got a question on the, on the. Called First Do, we talked about having like a picture of the house, and then all, just so my. Think of no, and help, what's the practicality of that? There's a fire that comes in somewhere, it's an automatic bomb up, you know, through your computer system, or should you have to go?
No, it just gives me an idea of where the driveway is, can I put a ladder truck in the driveway, or do I need a ladder truck? Um, is it three stories high, or is it two stories, is it ranch, is it colonial?
Okay, but what's the practicality of that? The alarm comes in, you're not gonna sit at the computer and look at that, you're getting on the truck and heading over, right?
All the trucks have iPads, it pops up on the, it pops up on the iPad in the front.
And the nice feature about the program is that, like, if we have a new call, like, right now, if the tone went off, there's a red flashing light in the bottom right, so all you have to do is hit that red light, and it brings all the information for that call up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pretty, yeah, so if you're sitting in the truck, it pops up, it's all there.
So when you pull up, you know that you're at the right house, something like the TV's going, or not warming, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so, so even, like, uh, even some places might not put numbers in front of their houses, uh, we, we, we've seen that a lot. Well, this is all done through vision, through the city, through the town, so we had that address, so even if there's no numbers in front of the house, we have a picture of it, at least. So if I pull up and I see a, uh, a, a yellow ranch, then I know, well, it's yellow ranch, it's probably, there's no number on it, but probably where we need to go, so.
Did you fill it out, or did you look at it?
Yeah, I logged in, created a file, but.
Yeah.
So did you ever play with it?
Yeah, I did, just scan the code.
Oh, you did?
There you go. Yeah. Um, can I ask you a question about electricity?
Yeah.
I know, I know that you lowered it by five hundred dollars, but, uh, isn't, yeah, but isn't. Uh, how much are we crediting them from our solar? How much do they get credit every month?
Well, we have to, we have to pick a percentage to provide to them, so it's a, it's a working, uh, a working situation to have right now, like, I've got enough data now to calculate. How much we actually use here, and how much we may have available to move to other places, so, uh, that's one of the reasons why we dropped it by five hundred, it'll continue to drop as we get more data, and get a little more comfortable with. With how we can, uh, disperse the electricity to, to our other properties.
Did we knock down, is there an electricity line item for Roger?
Yep.
And did that get knocked down, too?
Yes.
Even with CFP, Jack up the rates on everybody?
Yes.
I looked at the latest, uh, bill, yeah. It's gonna benefit both public works.
They must be paying us.
Sorry, but it's, it's over time, so we're generally, we're not electricity down there, far more.
January, February are the only two months right now that we did not generate enough to sustain this building by itself. We had to buy, go, go back into the bank to take care of just this property, so. Give us a good data that we can begin to use to other, our other facilities.
Yeah, there was a really cold day in January.
That was just a.
Shorter, shorter, shorter hours, too. The less. Yeah, the less, ooh.
Yeah.
Yeah, at all.
AC now. Yeah.
Are they paying us more per kilowatt hour now, with the rate increase?
Well, I haven't looked at that, Jason, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah. The supply rate increased January first. Five point three eight cents per kilowatt hour. I know what I'm.
I just didn't know on the other end of it, Jack, where we're making power, if we're getting supplemented more for the power that we're making.
They're gonna pay more.
We do first lot. Jack has done the calculations, and I can't recall what we get it back from, we, we sent it to them, but we get it back at a certain, uh, reduce, reduce the percentage. Yeah, I can't remember what that percentage was, do you recall, Jack?
I, I don't, but, uh, exactly, but roughly, of this total generation. This, uh, CFP takes roughly a third, they have to provide backup, so. It's no power. A, about a third is used to support this building, and a third goes to the. Our, for, to, for.
Yeah, to go back on First Do, uh, yeah, so with, with everything that they offered, I did look at other software companies, and a lot of them did not offer with First, to offer us. Uh, First Do also was willing to work with us with any other teams that we would have down the road, those guys are programmers, and they, they've been helping. The, uh, I, I did look at other couple of softwares that were a couple thousand dollars a year, but they didn't offer anything to what we needed for us, so it wouldn't have been helpful for us to change to that.
What's the really cost for First Do?
First Do is eighty-six hundred. So, uh, I did look at a couple other ones that were fourteen, fifteen thousand a year, and I was like, look, it's, it's weak. And they weren't even offering what First Do was offering, so it was just still a better offer to them, and. That's how, that's how we did that.
And what was the previous, uh, one that we have, what was the cost for them?
Well, with, before, we had Data Track, um, uh, we had, what was the other one, Jason, the scheduling one?
I am responding?
Nope, we have, we still have I am responding, uh, the scheduling one, what was it called?
Data Track, First Do, and.
Yeah. Uh, it was our scheduling program, and we had some training stuff on there as well.
Alatech?
Alatech, thank you. Um, so that one was thirty-two hundred a year, and Data Track was twenty-eight hundred.
We, we update the dues down here to put the appropriate information for the, it says scheduling online three thousand.
Yeah, Data Track is still there.
Right.
Yeah.
Get the right software company there, and have the right cost.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, I want to finish what we had started talking about.
Keith, what do the asterisks correlate to in that first column, is it just a?
They were, uh, what I did was, uh. I indicated the department has to leave the salary adjustments, retirement, electricity, health insurance, all the benefits to us to calculate here in the office. So when you look at, the insurances come from MMA, so all those were things that we just gave to them to load into their, their program. So when you look at the insurances come from MMA, so all those were things that we just gave to them to load into their, their, their departments. Everyone okay with that?
At the moment.
Data track maybe heads up. Yeah. That chat brought to us. It's like I got the year which you left. You have a chance to switch over. Everyone in the county right now, most people had data tracks. Everyone's looking.
Anybody else around us going to jump into first do or?
Um, it's been show, uh, EMA, uh, brought them in and did a, a Zoom call with now the fire departments in the county.
Yeah.
Did a big demo. Uh, so we'll see. We're the first ones to jump in with community connect with the first one doing this kind of stuff, uh, in the state. Stuff for us. So we're gonna promote it a little bit more with media newspaper ad. Showing around to people in the.
So chief, the stuff that you talked about in your. The novel here. That, any of that going to affect this page?
Uh, no. What do you mean?
Well, clearly it's not.
Yeah, well, I mean, so we, I don't see this anywhere it's on here.
It's not on.
Okay.
But it's on mine. Yeah, it's on yours. We're looking at, I think it was two hundred and eighty one thousand dollars.
I got the special edition.
You know, I, I could have put it on there, but, um, I think it's more important to have the discussions with, prior to that, that. Get some sort of direction from you folks as to, based on the information provided to you, his, his thoughts about that. And then. With that information, we can then begin to blend together some sort of, uh, budget that can be supported by you folks. Cause I. I think we both agree that if we don't have the support of the budget board, the board is selected, we won't with it, with this, that it's just not going to be fruitful for anybody at the town meeting.
I do have a question and I'm thinking of this in, in terms of say where Tom lives. Where Tom lives. Goodwin's Mills would be just a few minutes away. Our service would have to be go all the way around the block to get to his house. Do we have an agreement with Goodwin's Mills?
Yes.
That, that people in that area of Arundel or even over off South Street in Bitterford.
Yep.
Uh, would be covered by them.
Actually, Goodwin's Mills is going to go to him first. That's part of the agreement. I have it right here.
Yeah. So the houses in that small area of Arundel right there.
The, the plan is that, uh, we wanted to get first do going first and, uh, make sure that we're, we're good to go. Make sure that it works. There's no bugs, get all the bugs worked out and then go to their mutually aid departments like Bitterford, kind of on Goodwin's Mills. Uh, kind of on port, because they all have the iPads and trucks and download the first do app. It's an app. And so if they're coming to Arundel, all they have to do is hit the app, open it up and they could see the call and it hit the data. It's called the dashboard. And it pops up all the information. So that information would be available to them as well, uh, if they're coming to.
So there wouldn't be any charge for adding all the talks?
Nope.
So how does Goodwin's Mills know if there was, there was, uh, something needed in, in, uh. Um, area? How did they know that they're going to be the first ones out?
It's based on the address.
Okay, so they actually have that address, that information in their, in their system. Okay.
Yeah.
See what you're covering.
Thanks, Snow. Getting a little worried.
How many, how many houses in your area that are in, actually in the run though?
In, in that subdivision?
Well, not just the subdivision, but you've got the couple of houses across the street.
One house across the street. There is two, four, six, eight, and another one coming by.
Yeah, so there'll be nine there plus over off South Street. There's what? Couple more.
Yeah, on the other side is very close.
Yeah.
That one house, that's the only one.
Yeah.
That's good thinking.
Yeah.
All right, um, so yeah, the. They both did it. Which, which leads into one of the questions that Michelle had. All right. Want me to ask her? Um, now. Who paid for these packets? How much did they cost?
Um, the pamphlets were forty bucks for these plastic things. And the paper didn't cost me nothing. I went to Staples, they screwed up. They didn't charge me that.
Is that's what she asked you?
Yeah.
Yeah, they ran out of black ink right in the middle of printing. So they had to switch printers and they had already charged my car. So like, we don't know if we charged you, so we can't charge you again. So it's free, it's on us.
Thank you.
It's our donation to the run though.
Let's start off the question. Page thirty two.
Yep.
Charges there. Um, do you need another one? I've got an extra.
I'm sitting on the desk. Thank you.
And the charts don't show what the time period was set. I think it's what year.
Okay, yep. This is based on, uh, last year's information, twenty twenty one.
Both charts are twenty twenty one.
Yep. So that.
Not, not an average of several years.
Nope, nope. This is just past year. Yep.
And, uh. So. Looking at this from a. Easy standpoint. You have a kind of a different bell curve.
Yeah, if I did it monthly, definitely different.
Yeah. You know, but we're getting back on the staff. That's what I'm really driving down. What the. What the busiest times of the year are. The times being.
Yeah.
But that, that day may be different than January.
That's very correct, but I cannot predict when from.
Probably have all the states.
Yeah.
Putting it into. Graph. I think that would be very helpful. Better understand. What the staffing, the level of staffing needs might be and whether or not they vary in time. I was rather surprised, for example, that this is days of the week. So it's Saturday on the stand. Friday is quite there.
Yeah.
It's lower than one of the two.
Yep.
Like, I didn't have a better understanding of that. And then the, the number two thing. These calls, what types of calls are they? Bested, probably no more than five percent were fire.
I'd say it's about eighty twenty.
Pardon?
Eighty twenty. So about eighty percent EMS, twenty percent fire.
Fire encompasses a lot.
Yes. Fire, fire also includes motor animal vehicle accidents, uh, anything related to.
Oh, okay. There might be a fire vehicle. So it's classified that way.
But it's all based on.
Okay. I, I guess I mentally I was putting those EMS. So I think the better understanding of all of that for all of us would be able to help. That's my, yeah, it's not tonight, but. Those are my questions.
I have, yeah.
I have a few more, but.
Well, that's, I took one of Michelle's questions away from her. So she's really upset about that.
Well, we haven't understood.
So just, have you guys been able to look at this and go through it? Yeah, good. So we basically, I had to put something together and figure, how am I going to do this? So we started where, where we came from. And where we're at today and where we're going. So. I put all the history, put everything together as best as I could. I had a historian who works at the station once in a while. He's available. Reynolds been there forever. And, uh. He kind of helped me out and we did grab some, some of the, uh, some of the information I think we got it from the archives that are years. So, um. One of the things that we noticed is the full-time staffing, uh. Basically, Reynolds' position was held by someone else who first started as a full-time firefighter. He was hired nineteen seventy seven. That first year they did like, I think they did like eighty, eighty some calls and then next year they did a hundred fifty and then it kind of came back down. Uh, but throughout the years that did increase. Um, I think in the early two thousands, Arundel decided to start an ambulance, start, start doing transport. But not having the staffing, because call force was abundant, a lot of people. So the staffing ambulance, I think was dual. Throughout the years, I started to wind them. So that's when the per diem program came in. They started staffing ambulances with the per diems. Now, lucky enough, a lot of the per diems were already cross-trained is what we call them. They can do firefighting as well. So it's a good thing for Arundel to get someone who's trained to hold side.
You have a historical inaccuracy actually on page six.
I'm sure I do. And I was waiting for someone to point some stuff out.
Well, that's the only one. I only got to page six. I only got to that one. It says that, that the town, the land occupied by the Darrell school was deeded to the town of Arundel in eighteen ninety nine for school purposes only. And was given to the fire department by the Darrell family. It wasn't. It was given to the fire department by the Talbot family.
Uh, okay. Well, actually.
In nineteen seventy one.
That, this information, I cut and paste it from what I got from.
Really?
Yeah, so. That's good to know.
They gotta go back to Staples.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, no, leave it because there's probably not a lot of people that even realize that.
Yeah. Um, so then we started looking at, uh, what the population was back then and how many calls were run and how that's kind of evolved throughout the years. Um. And we kind of ran that piece and like, all right, let's leave that there. Let's leave that there for now. And then we just, uh, started with where we are now. And then. Basically, basically is. Uh, what we have for personnel, what are we running for, for diems compared to what we had in two thousand and seven when the program was started? And then, uh, how many calls are we doing? So. The call force, just that we have around, I think it was around forty people. It's on the chart. Um, it's down to like fifteen now. Uh, five of those people are just, uh, we call support, aides to help us direct traffic, maybe bring us coffee at night if we need it or. Uh, some form or another just help us out with the, uh. You know, with supplies and stuff. Uh, they're still valuable for us. That's why we're still keeping around. Uh, you know, but, uh. As far as being someone who's going to go inside of a house to put out a fire, uh, those days for them, we've determined that. At your certain points, it's just not healthy for them. It's just not. Get younger people to do that job.
Um, well, I think given the, the increase in calls, uh, you know, the population doesn't increase drastically, like the trend we've got when we all.
Yeah.
And also looking at some of the holes in the schedule that you've got in there. I think there's a reasonable justification for additional personnel.
Well, and then so, let me finish. We just, we just kept going. Um, we tried to figure out why we're losing call force. So we're like, we try to bring people on. And I will ask them, you know, what do you want to do? And a lot of them will be like, well. Right now I just, I'll help you whatever, but I don't want to do all the training. So I really can't use this person to fight fires. I might be able to use the direct traffic. But even now they want us to, they want us, they want us to send them out to traffic school. So, you know, there's, in order, they got to be certified here. So, um. We start finding some people that, well, maybe I'll want to do it. So they'll start coming to train. Then they realize, well, I can't make those trainings. I work all day long. Now you want me to come to training at night? Uh, I can't do weekends. And so six months down the road, we just don't see them anymore. Not, not being involved. They can then, the word quit is harsh, but that's what ends up happening.
That's one type of person.
Yeah.
That's your new. One that covers a range of functions. That isn't your critical, most of your.
Well, and that's what we're trying to bring in because we're trying to keep the call force, the volunteer, what they call the volunteer here in Arundel, a lot.
Yeah.
And I'm, and I, and I'm really struggling with them. Uh, we, I've tried for three years to try different avenues. And, uh, one of them was even to, uh, the pay scale because at first they were, if, if some of them. Were getting paid a certain rate as a per diem and came back as a call force member, their rates would drop. They were getting like minimum wage. So we were able to change that and get, so now they get their wages no matter where they come on the call, per diem or not. And we didn't see change there. Uh. So I thought, well, we'll bring in more personnel. I brought in more personnel. I hired like five people. A year later I said, you guys will want to be part of the fire department. We saw you twice. Nah, I really don't have the time. I'm sorry. Okay, so I need to move on. I did the same thing with the per diems. The per diems were dropping. I was down to ten medics, ten paramedics, uh, and five of those then put in for shifts. So I hired three more paramedics. Well, still having the same struggle with the paramedics. Unfortunately, one of those paramedics just got activated to the guards and he's away. So, um. We're still struggling.
Do they all come from other fire departments?
They all, they all do. So it's hard finding someone now, someone who's not involved with any other department.
Sure.
So.
But it starts to suffer.
So, um.
It seems to make more sense to, to go after somebody full-time rather than.
Well. You know, so. So that's just one avenue. There's, there's other avenues that I have, problems that I have. So I have. So I have potential to hire more volunteers or more per diems that are nineteen, twenty, twenty-one years old, who are very eager to get into the service and want to participate. Great. I could hire them. I'm around during the day. I can help them, train them, get them involved in the trucks, get them to know the tools, get them to know how to operate the tools, even down the road. Get them to operate a truck, drive a truck. Now, at nineteen, twenty, twenty-one years old, to put someone in a million dollar piece of equipment on a Saturday afternoon, send them down the road, driving thirty tons, I can't do it. I can't do it. I can't release a kid to drive an emergency vehicle. That's just a huge liability. And now, because if something happens and this person kills someone and doesn't have the experience and the knowledge, it's on us. So I can't do it. I don't have supervision on the weekends. I don't have anybody. Will hire these kids to come in, drive an ambulance. That's three hundred thousand dollars. And expect everything to go fine. Monday morning we come into work, you know, equipment broken, it's in the wrong place or something was mishandled over the weekend. So we, the supervision is needed in the station. There has to be someone to overlook these people. Now, hiring a full-time person, now they're set accountable. There's policy in place. They need to follow the policy. And they know that. Full-time people have two per diems working. They know that. They have to follow these laws and there's someone accountable for that. Right now I don't have that. It's unfortunate. I've been trying to figure it out and I have some people that have been around for a long time. I'm very fortunate. There are some guys that work the weekends that have been around for ten years. And now they're getting. So some of those guys are stepping up. So I can bring the younger ones in. But it's, it's, it's not, it's not a hundred percent. It's not even close to a hundred percent. You know, because the per diems are part-time. They work maybe one or two shifts a month. So to catch that on those times, it's just so hard to make that all work.
So per diems, they work just work, what's your question?
I have some people, some people.
Some, some.
Yeah. Yeah, some people will work. Twenty-four, thirty-six hours a week. Some of them will work one shift and then I don't see them for another three weeks. So it's here and take, yeah. So that's my, that's my other piece is to have that person to be accountable.
Have a full-timer.
Full-timer. Twenty-four, seven. So that way we have that covered. Now having that full-timer there. Per diems, per diems are our part-timers. If I have a per diem that. How do I say this politely? If I have someone show up late to work, you're two hours late. Yep, sorry. Some places go, go home. That's how it used to be. Now if I tell them to go home, now I got nobody. Well, he's two hours late. Don't do it again. Step on the hand and then we go about our day. You know, to discipline somebody now, that has changed as well throughout, you know, with everything that has changed with the manpower issue. It's, you can't just discipline like we used to. Someone used to be out of step or do something wrong, go to hell home, you know, walk. And now we can't do.
Despite all those problems, just the fact that you're trying to get by this fire department with one full-time employee, give them a hundred calls in a company. And the fact that things have gone only increase and marketability, I think can easily justify a couple of full-time.
The, so.
Let's get into the meat of it.
So.
We'll get to this really quick. Well, we've been around a long time, but I think we know the history. Let's get to the meat.
No, no, let me continue. Let me continue. So I have that piece as well.
You're always gonna talk yourself out of something.
You, because you, because you're going with one full-timer, that, that creates another problem. A one full, another full-time position will give me coverage during the weekday. Doesn't give me coverage at night. So I, it still doesn't fill enough slots.
But it's more than what you have today.
It's more what I have today, but it's still not enough. I'm telling you right now, it's not enough and I'm gonna tell you it's not enough. Till, till the sky, this, the sky turns red.
I'm gonna tell you that everyone who's probably under twenty cents on the mill rate. And I personally, I don't know what everybody else feels. I'll support you on one this year. And take another look at it again next year, but I'm not gonna support you on three full-time guys. And see a sixty cent, get the mill rate post on this one.
I didn't know if you want to bring up the ARPA money to help. Yeah, I, I, I have, I have approached them with this, the, that subject before. There's a possibility that some of the American Rescue Plan monies that we have could be utilized within a particular year to, to soften the blow to taxpayers if you chose to put on more. Now, I'm clearly trying to define exactly whether or not it's eligible. Everything I've read indicates to me that it is eligible. But I want to have somebody at school tell me that. So there's a possibility that we have some money there that we could use to do that with.
The problem I have with that is that that money is going to be a one-shot deal. So if you put on three guys this year and expect to pay them out of this ARPA money, next year, bingo. Unless you want to fire two or three guys, which probably nobody is gonna want to do. Then we take the hit next year instead of this year. So I'd ra, I'd much rather see that money going to some, something like you suggested, like sewer system one, which will probably lead to great evaluation of the property that we want. You will see an increase in your tax revenues rather than put it into something like payroll. I think putting it into payroll is a bad move.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a big mistake. If you put that into payroll this year, people know about that. Next year, that one person is gonna come online. Now, you know, the, the budget's gonna increase next year because of that one person. You put that one person online this year, increase the budget this year for that one person, you've got a better chance next year with all of your information behind you of adding that third person. I think if you take that money out of, from the government, you don't have that chance next year.
I think it's a small amount of money to take, right? So if, if you take it from the American Rescue Plan, we know, we take it with this assumption, we take it that we know the next year, we're gonna have to pay for that individual. If things change with the fire department and rescues go down, then, then that we don't no longer need that individual. But there is a, to me, there is a huge need for this from the fire department. Those funds are available. We try to peanut butter some of those funds across the board in various ways.
Just to.
Firstly, I'm not a big fan of the sewer or route one and I don't think that's ever gonna be a case. I don't think that's ever gonna happen. And I think there's an opportunity for, in the timeframe, and I think there's money there now. It's an opportunity for us to grab that money and do something. With the assumption that we know that come next year, we're gonna have to pay for it. I mean, we can't go in this blindly, but we know that we're gonna have to pay for it next year. So that's the decision that we made. You said, one of your things here is we get one individual this year, we get another individual next year. If that's the case, then let's use those money and hire those two individuals now.
The town of Acton did that. They hired one every year for four years and now, now they have four full-time. So it was less of a hit. That's always an option.
Yeah. Keith, when do we start seeing revenue from the cottages?
We're seeing revenue now.
That's not deferred anymore?
I don't know what you mean. We have a tip. Oh, you mean, oh, you mean actual revenue coming into tax roll?
Correct.
Um, no, you're not gonna see it for another twenty years. You're not.
I thought that was a twenty-year tip, I think.
Uh, I think it's twenty thirty-five, I wanna say, somewhere around that neighborhood, that I'll have to pull the paperwork on it yet. But you're gonna see the, the full hundred percent on your tax roll won't be until then.
Right, right, but incrementally we gain.
There's no increment, there's no increment in it. It's, it's, uh, what is it? Seventy-something percent and thirty-something percent. There's a percentage to it. It doesn't vary. The only thing that varies is that as more value comes on, our chunk of that money increases.
Right.
But it goes into that tip.
Right.
But we also have money that stays on the tax roll as well and increases at a slower rate.
That tip is just for equipment?
No, there's categories for.
It goes, there's some of it that goes at the general plan. And they've got established that some of it goes in. I'm pretty sure.
Right, this percentage that goes in. I'll, you know, what I'll do is I'll bring it out so we're not guessing about it, but. I'll bring it so you know what that tip is actually, because it is confusing if you're not looking at it all the time.
There's a lot of homes going in there every year.
Yeah, and we, and we haven't even really seen from a fire rescue standpoint. I don't think we've seen the repercussions of the cottages yet.
We've been there last year six times.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot. I think there's gonna be a lot of call volume coming out of that, but it's gonna be what, May fifteenth to, you know what I mean? It's not gonna be year-round. It's gonna be.
But it's gonna be in the middle of tourist season. We've got everything else going on.
Yeah, but just, just. Just to tell you, like just this week alone, you've seen six new proposals for housing developments at the, at the town office. Six new proposals. So it's just crazy what's happened. It has happened. It just.
This goes back to impact fees too.
I don't see why we can't grab some.
No, just housing development.
Impact fees and supplementing fire department call works.
It's just.
Subdivision, yeah.
I, I, I can't do this all one guy.
So do you have one other person? Is that in the budget for one person, one more person?
Right, yeah.
Uh, we didn't, we didn't.
Didn't cover labor.
It isn't in here at all.
We have had two structured fires this past week.
Sure, yeah.
And. The first one we had on Limerick Road, I had one guy show up and he had to drive from Bitterford. The ambulance was on a call. The ambulance was on a call, so that, there was three minutes. They had just gone on a call. Fire came in. So the individual had to drive from Bitterford to drive to get the truck. By the time he got to the scene, Kenny Bunk was already there with a ladder truck to get there. Kenny Bunk ended up having to put fire up. Now. We had another call, commercial fire alarm, kind of the same situation where the ambulance was out. One day, they had a commercial fire alarm on Coral Road. That being at the daycare, they had a water problem. I had my deputy, one of my deputy chiefs went in with his personal vehicle and the first apparatus, the first fire engine was Kenny Bunk. They were on scene. It took them twenty-five minutes to get there.
Eight o'clock.
So, yeah, twenty-five minutes for the first piece of apparatus to drive on scene at the building bit on fire. Different story, but twenty-five minutes is long.
Yeah. Each position, just to give you some information, generally speaking, each position in the full benefit package is about ninety-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars per position. So if you put on three, you're looking at two hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
That's including FICA, everything.
That's including everything.
And John, what was the number you said for each individual, what they hit on the tax rate?
Oh, round figures. It's just a hair, the twenty cents for every hundred thousand dollars. So it amounts to about three hundred thousand.
Right, so you, so each, each person is twenty, is twenty, in essence, is about twenty cents. Proxy. So I mean, from my perspective, I'd like to get a feel from the boards, you know. Stop from, right, I mean, do we, everybody agree to entertain at least one and then we kind of go from there? All right, let's try to make some headroom.
We support one.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that, that's.
I want two. Anybody who'll support two? I worked alone last night, so yeah, I'll support two.
That's gotta be scary up there working alone.
Yeah, you know, if fire comes in, yeah.
You're calling Kenny Bunk.
It, it, if someone.
Depending on where it is.
That or someone's in cardiac arrest.
Yeah.
That's the biggest fear is cardiac arrest.
You're by yourself.
John, it's just, the twenty cents is based upon credit valuation.
Yes.
Increase valuation with.
And I, I think it's hard. But it's hard to pull that data because I don't think it's accurate.
I think we could justify easily.
Don't forget, we got a huge increase on Casella, potentially huge increase on Casella.
On what?
Yeah, Casella could potentially. You know, it might not be this year, but it's probably next year.
You're looking at, well, this year you'd be looking at.
Hundred, hundred thirty thousand something, right?
Yeah. Gonna have another hundred.
So there's about twenty cents, right?
Yep.
Hundred thousand, could be about twenty, hundred thousand, fifty, twenty cents. The thousand, you know, twenty-six, twenty-seven cents.
I think we could easily justify at least one person this year.
Right.
Once that person's there for a year, then next year, we won't, won't have a problem justifying another person.
Unless we tap it for ninety thousand dollars, which is, in those funds, there's still plenty of funds available. We tap into that.
Yeah, but if you do that this year, then next year, you know that ninety thousand dollars is gonna come online. Plus, we want to add another ninety thousand on top of it. That's just as bad as adding two new people this year.
Those, those federal funds, I think, I think it would be wise for us not, at, at least at this stage of the game, it would be better for us not to say we're gonna take those federal funds and use it for a specific purpose. Let's get a handle on the whole budget and see what we're looking at. But then if we decide to say, well, that's for ninety or a hundred thousand dollars of the federal funds towards the budget to, to keep the bill rate reasonable rather than saying we're gonna take ninety thousand and put it to a fire. But let's.
Well, that, that's good. That gives keep a, a time to go figure out if we can actually use those funds for those. The problem with those ARPA funds too is that they have to be, they have to be spent, and they have to be specific of what you're spending it for. So in other words, say you, say you said we want to use ninety thousand for the fire service. We'd have to have a separate warrant article to allocate that money for that purpose.
Okay.
And get those voters to vote for that.
I get what you're saying, but I don't think this is the time to be separating that out.
No, but I, 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 I don't think, I just don't want you to think that that money is there that we could just plug it in when we.
Yeah.
We actually gotta get the taxpayers to approve it.
And, and when it comes to the sewer thing, I don't believe that we can get that, that's not gonna get all done in time for when those funds are have to be used by.
No, and we have some money in the chip for some of that sewer work now.
Right.
Uh, above, I wanna say two hundred and eighty to two hundred and ninety thousand is in there right now. The, with the ARPA funds, we have to spend them by the end of twenty twenty-four. So they, they don't have to be totally spent, they have to be allocated to something that you're gonna spend them for so they can be reported upon.
But are there other things that we could spend on? So if we spent money here on fire department, we could reduce some other budget someplace with those funds for one-time purchases of, of equipment, machinery, whatever it might be.
Absolutely. I'm just saying, I don't think we ought to be doing that right now. Let's get a handle on the whole budget for you. Let's say, okay, well, we.
And that's, I, that's, we have prompted that, John. Let's take a look and see what we, you know, what we can redo elsewhere, maybe.
Ever seen the school, like.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is we're gonna get a little creative and some money, so.
We're gonna have to.
You folks are gonna be well-involved in that because those are things that.
There's some big numbers that are gonna get us this year. We're gonna have to be very creative and just, they have to cut somewhere. I don't know.
So you're gonna redo this budget, adding one more person?
Right now, I guess the consensus is at least one.
Yes.
At least one. I could, I could addition to. I really could. Based upon what I read here.
Based on, based on what I read too. I could see two.
Yeah.
I, I agree. I just, what's gonna pass with the taxpayers?
Yeah.
I will. Between this and Casella, what's gonna pass with the taxpayer?
I'll lay out one sheet with one full-timer and one sheet with two full-timers. And I'll get you that chip information. And I'll get you that TIF information, that would be good to have anyway.
Trying to, I couldn't swear, there was like a, it was a step down, I don't know, I must be thinking something.
No, but it seems to me I can remember that graph, as, as, one number went up, the other number went down.
They asked for something specific originally, remember, we bet it in the middle, they asked for a thirty-year tip, I wanna say, we wanted like a ten-year tip, I thought we had a.
One side of Jess, oh.
But I thought, like, a year of calls, seven or ten.
Yeah.
More money came to the town every year.
Yeah.
I thought it was fire rescue.
Well, that's what I thought too.
Whatever.
I don't recall, but I, I remember the seventeen thirty, like, thirty percent of the general fund, all comes to Austin, and that gets broken down into thirty dollars. We'll, we'll have to pay.
Yeah, I, I know it's in my office.
Over in our space.
It's worth reaching out to CMP, about to break CMP, we have, we have a separate TIF for CMP, and that's strictly designated.
Correct.
Is it, is it worth reaching back out to them and saying, look, you guys just increased your rates by eight percent, can we get some more money on the CMP TIF?
Well, we'll get some more money for it, it'll be, well, I, no, I don't, I take that back, it's based on value, whatever the value is set on that, it won't be because CNC increased their rates.
Yeah.
Right, so.
If the, by the value, if the value of the property of the, of the.
Right.
Right away increases, then we get more money.
Correct. Can any of that be used for labor or no?
Uh, no, it's not labor, this, it, it's specifically for equipment, fire, forest fire fighting services, and building renovation and or expansion.
To support the, the corridor.
That's why we got the, the four-wheeler, the trailer, the, uh, rush truck.
Actually, the fire engine too, the, the new engine.
Right, we use some money from that to, to cover that cost as well.
Can we use any of that to help reduce any of this budget, like building maintenance, maintenance, vehicle maintenance, can we use any of that TIF money for that, that would help?
Well, we may be using some TIF money to take care of the, uh, deficient heating system that's in this, it's in the, uh, uh, bays right now.
Okay.
And it's something that Chief and I have, we've talked about for a little bit, and you've seen some of that, I think, do we use a portion of it for the new bay doors?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, the new bay doors, so renovations, repairs, to keep the, the building in tip-top shape.
Okay, and are those funds in here now?
In that, no, not in that.
I'm kinda getting the impression that everybody here is kinda behind two additional fire. I'm the only one who supports one. I can be talked into two.
Keep talking, Chief.
I don't wanna be the only one that's, uh, banging on the table with one guy.
I, I, I'm actually more in a line of one, if you don't, like, be a follower.
Yeah, well, that's what I.
Well, instead of jumping into a hole that we don't know.
Seeing the numbers.
Well, for, for the same reason, because like Crystal Ball says, the economy's gonna go down. Be looking for every dollar.
Geez, thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jeff. Courage me.
I, I take the.
I don't like Crystal Ball.
That's. You have Fox News, you have more Fox News here. One, 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 one.
Yeah, all right, so I'll do both.
I'm happy with all this, I, this is all good. Changes needed, and that's what everyone agrees with, and I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Yeah, and again, if anything in this budget can come out of the TIF, note that, so that we know, I mean, you may be able to reduce some of these things.
Yeah, I, I think when we put together the building maintenance, we, we need to further the heaters there.
Okay.
Um, don't forget that roof, I've been reminding you about that roof for.
How many years?
That's a fifteen thousand dollar hit, probably, so.
Yeah. Thanks, thanks, pal, I'm just.
He was using TIF money for that, right there.
Uh, unfortunately lumber and, uh, building materials are about to go down in price.
Yeah, and, uh, they gotta go down this spring.
That's where, that's where he sold me.
Yeah.
Right, Jason?
According to the phone calls, I'm at a default, but.
All right, let's get on.
So, you, you know, the other two budgets here, uh, just, just to let you know, the per diem and the, uh, call company, those were adjusted by five, five point nine percent. And I think that's the other issue that you folks are gonna have to give me some direction on. Is the five point nine percent something that you can live with, or are you looking at another number? And, you know, I'm giving you what I think it should be, but you tell me what you want it to be.
Well, I certainly wish I could get a five point nine percent rate.
Well, let's make it, make it a solid five point two or four, three, two.
Yeah. I think, I think this is another thing, like, to John's point, where, let's get through this whole process and look at this bottom number and.
Okay.
You know, one percent change on bottom number drastically.
Yeah, and then come back and revisit them.
Yeah.
I'd say leave it as the five point nine from now on.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, so the presentation you have here is those adjustments are based on that, and then I blended those rates based on, uh, on, uh, what we have paying, so.
The only question I have is on the per diem, what's the comparison column of the sixteen thousand hours versus?
Well, in my pea-brained thinking.
That's all you have to say, never mind, thank you, okay.
My boss.
That's all I wanted to hear.
The guy's gonna put on three guys, so he's gonna cut his per diem rates.
Yeah.
By half.
And I was like, I can't do that.
And, and then when I talk to him, he says, what the hell are you doing? And I, I didn't take it off, I thought it was kinda comical, I mean, it's, it's kinda exciting, I got out of it, but, uh, that was the reason why I said eight.
So, the first column is status quo with the, with the pay increases.
Yes.
And then the second column is cut in half.
Yeah.
Essentially, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I'd be, yeah.
Yeah, my, my heart stopped when I saw that.
So, with that said though, you know, we factoring that in, cause that's a hundred and forty-three thousand dollar decrease on the per diem payroll. Right, so if we went down to eighty-five twelve and hired two guys, let's say, so our, our per diem payroll will go from three sixty-one down to two eighteen?
No, it wouldn't, because that, no, it will stay at, it will stay at three ninety-four, five nine, because he wants to keep all the per diems in that town. So, he essentially can have.
And that was another issue I didn't get to.
Um, he can have three per shift.
Three, three per shift would allow, I always had one calling out, you saw it last night.
I know, I understand that, but I'm, I'm almost thinking that you're, I don't think we can have the best of both worlds on the get-go, you know, I think, I mean, I think the per diem program now is based on two people, two people around the clock, I understand, which would be phenomenal if we could sustain two people around the clock.
Yep.
So, if we brought in two more additional personnel, why couldn't we kick back the per diem to one per diem, just to supplement the one full-timer, now you, now you have two people on, around the clock, guarantee.
No, you don't.
Why?
No, because if you take, if you, if you hire two people, that's just one position on that shift, you're not putting another person on the shift.
But you, you have the per diem.
Right, only one per diem.
Right.
That per diem calls out, Jason's by himself, who was last night.
Yeah, but we, it's, I've, I mean, it's very rare that we ever have zero on the shift, you might have the occasional Sunday, but.
I had seventy-two times.
We had zero?
Seventy-two times, I pulled it up, that, that, I actually put in the article, it was like forty, but that number was wrong. I did a, I did a study yesterday, just, just for shits and giggles, and, they, no, not by themselves, but.
I don't think, I think you'll find that the, that number would be really low, that there's never anybody.
I think we gotta, you know, um, what we gotta sustain for coverage, manpower coverage for a shift.
Which, you know, rumbled to me, two people, if you have two, I mean, don't get me wrong, Chief, I love three people there, hundred percent, I would love three people. But, I mean, to add that much money and expect three people to be there, why not kick it back a little bit and guarantee the two that were trying to sell the public on? Although we've sold the public on the per diem program, guaranteed that you've got one for sure full-time, and one per diem that you sustain, you know what I mean?
I, 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 I think that's not a good way to go.
I think it's a start, I mean, it's guaranteeing you two people.
You have a, if you have a schedule.
So, so from July, yeah, so from July to now, to February, we had shift vacancies seventy, seventy-two times, so seventy-two times, we didn't have an ambulance service.
You have one person on.
One person.
Right, so we're basically guaranteeing one person is there with the per diem staff, that's basically what we can guarantee now, one person is there with the per diem staff.
No, that's one person without, that's one person by himself.
Right, but it's, one per, like, the per diem program right now, it's just, we can guarantee that one person's gonna be there. I know we're, 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 we're trying to get two there, but we obviously can't, we're proving we can't get two people there with a per diem program. So, why not supplement per diem program with a, with a position, with a full-time position to guarantee the two people that are there, instead of trying to go to three people, you know what I mean?
Because if, if we try to go to the third person, now if I, if I have someone call out.
You're down to two people.
I'm down to two people, but I know I have two.
I don't see how that, how does, how does two more full-time position guarantee?
If you, if you go a full-timer in a per diem, and that per diem calls out, or goes somewhere, because Bitterford's hiring overtime, or Salk was hiring overtime, or wherever Kenny Bunk's hiring overtime, the money's better over there, and they decide to go over there, and now you're by yourself. So, now you're down to one.
See that.
Three guarantees two, two guarantees one.
Two per diems guarantee one, but I, I, I think, I think you'll find that one per diem, one full-timer would guarantee two.
I'm reading this right, two is enough either.
No.
It is, you had a problem with two, you need three.
I agree with you, I agree with you a hundred percent, yeah.
So, so.
What are you looking at in perspective on the sole to the public?
I'm, I'm looking at it as, I'm not trying to get.
You have three.
The best, right now.
If we do have three, now this would just be doing a day, at night, we'd be down to two again.
How?
This only covers the day position.
How would you be down to two again at night?
We don't have, without three, without three.
But your argument you're making right now is you have the per diem program at night, and you're gonna guarantee us two, right?
No.
My word trip of that person.
I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't sustain a twenty-four hour shift with just two people. There's not enough, there's not enough hours, there's not enough.
Plus Reynold being the, the third, so you're keeping Reynold and adding two.
Well, Reynold would have to run a twenty-four hour shift.
Right.
And I would need three, so I would have one shift open. One shift open without a full timer.
One twenty-four hour. Without a full timer.
Yep.
And that's the other concern you have, is the, if you have a full-timer there, then you have control of per diems, in terms of, in terms of work, getting down all the site.
Not only that, but if we show up on scene with three guys, and some of us coming from home, one of the deputies coming from home, or, or someone from the call force, now we cover the two in, two out.
But there is no call force, we've already decided that.
Well, once you know how one shows up, it's still, you know, out of the five that we have, one of them shows up, it covers the two in, two out, so now by NFPA law, we're covered. Right now, we can't meet those requirements.
But you can't, you can't call that, though, because.
Right.
That's a crap shit.
It's a, it's a, it is crap shit, yep, but it's better than what I have now. So, there's a lot of things in play here to, you know, coming from all kinds of directions, and that's why it's like, all these things going on in my head, I had to put it on paper, and I was just.
I, I personally think though, and I don't wanna beat this to death, because I, we've spent too much time on this already, but, to sell the public on this, if we can show a diminished rate in the per diem to supplement the full-time increase, would be a much better sell than per diem increasing five point nine percent and adding two more positions, it's, I'm telling you, I promise you.
That's why I asked you the question.
You're gonna get negative feedback on that, I guarantee it.
I think we disseminated a lot of the information here, we might not, that's frightening, to me.
I know it's frightening, but I mean, it's, it's, emergency service, everything with emergency service is frightening, everything, man, you can't talk about emergency service without someone being frightened.
Right now, the only thing I can guarantee is if you call nine one one, I told this at this today, you call nine one one today, right now, someone's gonna answer the phone. That's all I can guarantee you. Who's coming to your house? I have no idea. I don't even know if they're coming, you might not get someone to run it.
I mean, Kenny Bunk's hiring four more, so they're gonna go to eight.
Yeah, but that's Kenny Bunk.
I know, but I'm just, I'm speaking out loud here, I mean, our surrounding towns are beefing up their personnel in tune with what we wanna do.
Their call volume is also increasing.
I totally understand that, yeah, a hundred percent.
You know, the, the, the gorilla in the room too, is where the hell are all these people gonna come from?
That's the other.
Yeah.
That's the other issue we have, I mean, we could do all well, and, you know, put the funding there, but we may not have a body to fit it.
Right.
Trouble filling one.
Yeah, it, that's, I mean, I could go on the M E C job site right now, and they're, they're everywhere.
Uh, what are you saying, New Mexico has some full-time fighters, uh, full-time to supervise over firefighters, teenagers, you know, that are at high school, that work, you know. But are, are they currently involved with, you know, departments involved with those high school kids?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I just hired.
Get them involved, that's who.
I just hired two for the call force, they're both nineteen, twenty years old, they're also call force guys, they're. They're actually Bitterford guys, they're, they're coming from Bitterford, so, you know, they do their training, they do some stuff, but they're still as green, as green gets. Unfortunately.
That, that's only. Uh, that's kinda what, is there like a feeder program to get things involved at the high schools?
Yeah, well, uh, Jason's son, Adam, is in the high school program.
Yeah, the, the vote programs run a program.
So, I just signed him, I just signed him on as well, just started with us, uh, this Thursday, next week, on the twenty-second, but.
Just so you know, it doesn't work with the old man, we, we work on it.
Yeah. No, but that's great, I, I thought, well, we can come work with that, yes, that's some good stuff right there, absolutely, I think so, so, uh, but, yeah, there's just not enough stuff out there. Apparently, uh, mainly, uh, your county EMA has started funding, I think they're at fifteen million for a, uh, training facility, and, uh, they've already acquired the land, they're in the process of development. Uh, it's gonna be a training facility for fire EMS, they're gonna have a structure, a big tower, uh, where they can put fires in, and, uh, can actually have some classroom space.
Well, Youngwood had a training facility down, do they still operate it, or?
It's condemned.
It's condemned.
Hollister, Hollister? Is Hollister still up and running?
Yeah, it's, it's, again, it's condemned, it's, it's in rough shape.
They just didn't maintain it?
No.
Just used it and do it.
It's falling apart. Yeah, yeah, and so they got some, some money granted to them, I was like, it was a lot of money, uh, I think Susan Collins was involved. Uh, it's gonna, yeah, where the, where the, the jail is, I guess they have some land out back.
Yes.
Uh, and they're gonna be, uh, building up there.
And they put their courthouse there.
A while back.
What's that?
There was an news article on that a while back.
Oh, there, there's been all kinds of stuff.
Well, they have a reading courthouse there, so they got space for it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pleasure, it's no sense off, it's a good section of downtown Bitterford.
I think we, I think we've surpassed.
Go on, you get a.
We're gonna revisit. Oh, one, oh, three, and oh, four later, when you get up to the old number, right?
Okay.
I think we're all set. Are you all set with fire right now? Okay, that was a pretty big nut, and I'm happy we had the discussion, we have it.
Yeah, I will, actually, one, one thing before you go, the payroll breakdown for, on, on the thirteen oh four. And I understand we're trying to keep five point nine percent across the board, but most of us in the fire service almost just got a three-dollar increase, like, three months ago, right?
Right, we'd be going from twenty-four to twenty-five.
You think that's still, I mean, you think we still need to go five point nine percent, even though we just did that huge bump?
Well, just trying to keep up with the Joneses around us, everyone else is going up too, so.
Again, I.
Yeah.
And I've said it, but I'll say it again, I'm against a five point nine percent, but the John point, of get it all, whether we can go back and look at it and say, guess what? We're gonna have to cut somewhere, guaranteed, we're gonna have to cut somewhere. Guaranteed, we're gonna have to cut somewhere.
Any gut feel for what the valuation increase might be this year?
Hey. Based on what we've done in the past, you know, you're looking at seven to nine billion dollars value that we probably pretty much count on.
Okay. Um, so we cracked in like eight billion.
I think it'd be in the ballpark. I I'll get more definitive answers from the assessor, but, uh, you know, what was it last year, fourteen million?
I'm thinking sixty.
Yeah, it was it was pretty substantial.
Yeah.
So, you know, whether it be that much again, I'm not sure, but I would tend to be more conservative with that number.
Oh, yeah, I'd rather be conservative with it at this stage.
Yeah, but but building hasn't stopped. Building is continuing.
Right.
Right. So.
It's crazy.
I'm not sure the conservative isn't, you know, there's nothing can stop from building. I mean, we got more buildings going on here than we you, you know, we have got all all of our permits last year and most of a lot of those houses aren't even completed built yet, so.
Any any gut feel for how bad the school budget increase might be this year?
Uh, it looks like, what if they got, the bottom line right now is two point, almost three percent, and they they.
Two, well, the initial number is two point zero three percent. It'll go up.
It'll go up there. Yep.
I think the legal line's gonna increase, right?
Yes.
No.
Actually, the legal line is, the legal line is down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, Aunt LeBlanc.
But they've added all these admin folks now.
Yeah. Not true. So if you, yeah, so if you take out all those admin lines, yes, you're gonna have to increase the legal budget. A lot.
Two point three now.
Two point zero three? That's a moment. Okay.
On the agenda.
Right, I should put Zoom taping. That Zoom tape.
I think that's worth.
You can yell at me. Um, so we're all set with the chief for now.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, and good job with this. This is nice. I like you. A lot of information there. Certainly appreciate it.
Break down.
Yeah.
For forty or fifty categories.
Yeah.
Could you send that out?
Yep.
The chance to review.
Yeah, you're more specific about the time of month, the month of the time of year and when how that affects the calls that you have and what type of calls.
You need to cover it in here, but you also need to understand what
that the the stats on that might be hard to get because a lot of the stats I'm getting is from call, uh, first due. And we've only had first due since July first. So the data is still coming in as we go.
You you if you go back to the year before you first do.
Uh, I don't know if I can get, I might like to try.
Well, it was being reported in the past.
Yeah. Yeah, no, as far as the calls and percentages, like how many EMS calls we've had, how many fire calls, all that stuff, I could probably get you that. Uh, that that didn't get you that fairly easy, but as far as determining time of year and, you know, time of day and all that stuff. That might be a little.
For the different parts. Stamp on each call?
No. See, we didn't, we didn't gather that data before.
We do now.
So we're not gonna, we're not hiring based on a seasonal trend. We're gonna, you're gonna hire a full-time.
Yeah, right.
Time, so. You know, I mean, it's nice to have the data, but it's not gonna sway my decision.
I I can't, I can't predict what someone's gonna call nine oh one.
Right.
Well, I would I would say the bar in terms of what that is, your life, best be you.
I got you.
Yeah.
For planning purposes.
Yeah. Yep. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
Uh, the next one I have was fourteen oh one, uh, civil services. I provided you a, it covers our ambulance billing, animal welfare, our contract with uh, Wes Kennybunk, uh, civil emergency temp, uh, plus the money that we put aside to to fund, um, shelter for all three communities, anybody came report and Rundle. The P S A and dispatch is a contracted, uh, with the Bitif Dispatch and it's based on a per capita amount. Uh, and then we put aside the fourteen oh fours contingency. So the ambulance billing's gone up slightly and you'll see that the, uh, the, uh, P S A, uh, and a little bit of the, uh, animal welfare has gone up. Again, animal animal welfare is based on a percentage capita on that population as well, so. We get now, the ambulance billing, I mean, we get some of that back anyway, like that's all. What, ambulance billing? Yeah. Yeah, this is just the administration by the company. I don't think that does it, but. Um, and that's their fee, and they only collect their fee when they collect money for, unlike our last company, which collected a fee, whether we got any money from it or not. So, uh. But I guess the point is that number is kind of skewed a little bit because there's a percentage of that that we get back. Correct.
Well, this is the this is the expenses, and that's the revenue, so.
Right. Right. So this is just what it costs.
For past couple of years, switched over to that.
Correct.
Service would do a lot better.
Correct, in terms of collection.
Does the animal welfare include salary for the animal welfare, uh, animal welfare?
The shelter director?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
No, I don't think the director would be an hour old man.
Oh, no, it doesn't. It doesn't.
That was when the animal.
Our H O comes out as a different separate budget.
But it's when they pick up, uh, you know, a stray animal that they take into the animal welfare.
It gives us the option. We didn't have a contract with them, if you're right, because we'd be able to bring strays dogs to them. We'd have to pound them ourselves and whether screenings and things like that, so. Anything else on that one at this point? What I did with the other three was just a follow-up, uh, the eleven oh two budget, I adjusted it to include the, uh, thirty-five to thirty dollars. Uh, thirty-five dollars, I mean, for the chairman at thirty dollars for the, uh, membership. In the twelve oh four budget, uh, I corrected the cover and it covered the salary numbers as they were last year's proposal. Hey, if you remember on the covered salaries, I had last year's numbers here, so I've adjusted that and put this year's numbers in there, including the planning, which is at fifty-six one. You know, I can correct it as a separate, uh, uh, idea. Uh, the twelve oh five, I adjusted the overtime based on suggestions that I heard. Um, what I did is I took an average and eliminated um, uh, twenty twenty-one's number because it was skewed as a result of us being between two buildings at a time. So the overtime number went down to forty-two. Then on the, uh, general assistance budget, you recognize that fact that the budget number for the salary was, and it's in the book at sixty-three oh eighty-seven. That was in GARA, quite frankly. It was, her budget number was sixty-one two forty-seven last year. Uh, and then her adjustment is based on five point nine percent, and so it'll be sixty-three seventy-two this year if it goes through. And that was changed. And then the other thing I changed was based on, uh, the direct aid for welfare, I based, I tracked that and reduced it from the total fifteen thousand to twelve thousand. Uh, similar to the previous year, and that, quite frankly, could even be adjusted again. Uh, to your point, if we're looking to cut some funding, that may have placed that, uh, because based on the expenses we had over the maybe even up close to ten thousand dollars yet, so still some wiggle. Okay, so then, that's, uh, that corrects the ones that we had.
I do.
And I've sort of got my marching orders now as to what we're gonna do with the fire department's budget. I'll make those corrections. I'll get the answers on a trip. Discuss that. I think that, uh, we're at this point, it's that, you know, what we're going to, what questions are we gonna look at? And next, or I'd like to bring in, uh, Public Works, Transfer Station, get them both the same night. Those will be two big ones.
Right.
Um, are we gonna have the figures from, um, or do we have the figures from Casella if we get rid of the punch card system? Do we know what that would cost?
I have that number. So i- in fact, I think it's already in your, uh, your budget number now, whenever it pulls that figure, so I think I have it in there. I think so. Yeah, I think that's what it went out. Based on if we do away with the, the, uh, pay for trash, things like that. So why don't we just do, um, Public Works and Transfer, I'd like to leave Rec. Uh, I I spoke, I gotta talk to Jen a little bit more, uh, just something on, uh, on R Q T, I, she's got a, she has a daughter that's got some health issues that she's dealing with right now. And, uh, I know that when I read your, uh, when I listened to your, uh, board select this meeting on the fourteenth, indicated you'd like to have her come back on the twenty-eighth. Uh, she's got, her daughter, her will be in Boston for some extensive, um, work workups on her, so, uh, she won't be available that night, so I I'd like to get with her a little bit more to see what her schedule is in the upcoming weeks, and then I'll schedule her in and then talk to you, so. Why don't we just do Public Works, Transfer? I'll have new numbers for the fire. I'll get you your shift numbers, and I think that will be enough for for now.
Can you give us a capital spreadsheet to me?
Yep.
Uh, balances and then. Is that gonna be a night? Are we gonna talk about capital strictly on one night or?
Yeah, I try, I'd like to do it one night.
Okay.
Roger may want to bring it up when he's here on on his capital piece, and then the other one, really, significant capital in the fire, and I haven't spoken to him. Though we've talked about a new ambulance. He's starting to think about that, so. Um, and quite frankly, the cost for a new ambulance scares the heck out of me.
How many more payments do we need to make on the fire truck? Uh, that's coming out of Tiff, Tiff.
Correct.
I mean, is that, so does the ambulance, can the ambulance wait till the fire trucks paid off?
That's my hope.
Yeah.
Yep, so we'll hold off if we can, wait for that fire truck to get done, and then we can build on the the ambulance.
Then it's essentially no money out of pocket, really.
Right. At at some point too, you know, before we get, we definitely want this. I mean, we talked a little bit about it the last meeting, that I'd like to see a spreadsheet of all the salaries, you know, all all of the employees' salaries and what they are and what the bump is, but that's gonna be key. Okay, so I gave you this one. Yeah, remember I had asked to go back a couple of years? That's right, you asked to have a comparison. Correct. All right, so 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 show, like in my, show this year's budget and what it is, what's proposed next year, so you see the difference. Right, so you have all your names here and then what it was in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, all that. You don't have to go back that far. Do you want just salaries, so you can see the difference, or you want the whole package? What's what's in the whole package? Yeah, I don't I don't care about FICA and all that. Okay, so you just want salary by. So I just want to see salaries from.
Retirement.
It that that's.
You don't care about that.
No, because that's the, we, okay. Yeah, I can get that for you, yeah. And so that would be, I would say we go twenty twenty-one, nineteen twenties, I think it's right, it's nineteen twenty twenty-one, and then yours, yours. Your, um, fully for twenty-two. Okay.
Now twenty-three.
Yeah, so we so we go twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, when you propose.
Yeah.
Last three years of salaries. Okay, I think it's key to, we all understand what the salaries are, you know, how they're moving and what actually.
Has anybody heard from the microphone?
Yep. Yep. Sent me an email.
User error.
Yeah.
Oh, it's just. It's coming. Uh, uh, microphones are, it's a, yes, a lot of the electronics thing that's hard to get. There's something with getting rolls and, um.
It's still on this local channel.
He told me that right now, he's thinking it's gonna be, you know, early to mid-March, when it's going to get the mics. You know. Yeah, there's not a whole lot we can do about this. You know, I don't wanna go up and pay pay some cheap, you know, I think the key with these is we need to talk louder. I mentioned it with Tom, in the next meeting, I'll take the number down, and the ones that we don't hear feedback, I'll go in the room and we'll crank the, we'll crank it up a little bit. Up until we have.
When's our next meeting?
I was looking at Thursday, March third.
We're gonna stick with Thursdays? I'm okay with that. Thursday's fine with me. I think it works out better for P O two, right? Yeah. Thursday's working out. Is it okay with Michelle? Michelle okay for Thursday?
Oh. I know it works out with me if it does, so, uh.
There's a possibility on Thursdays that I might not make it.
March third, Jack.
Third. Seven o'clock. Okay. Sure you will. Yeah. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Appreciate you coming there. That's very helpful.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, March third is good with Michelle.
Okay, March third it is.
Exactly.
Great, thank you.
I've already signed up for that, so.